Yeah, I have the morning. Special after the meeting, I think they're coming down.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Thanks. Thanks. I. I thought you'd be here for the whole.
Ah. So. You must. The doctor. Yeah. Oh.
All right, thanks.
Welcome, everyone. Please arise as we say the pledge and please remain standing for the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the reading of justice for all.
Almighty Father, we gather to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills in judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral. As we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. Amen. Tonight, we have two sets of business to take care of. One, we're going to do a reorganization meeting. We do that each year and January 1st or thereabouts after the holiday, January 2nd being today. And then after that, we're going to roll the agenda for the regular meeting that was yesterday that was postponed because of the holiday. With that, I'd like to call this meeting to order, January 2nd, 2019 at 6:36 PM. Can I have roll call, please?
I have Alderman's. Tyler.
Here.
Peckerro.
Here.
Berube.
Here.
Ron.
Here.
Zazoka.
Here.
Also present, Mayor Arthur G. Pappas and City Attorney Luke Brown.
All right.
I have approval of the minutes of the last session, December 18th, 2018.
I make that motion.
Moved by Alderman Zazoka.
A second.
Seconded by Alderman Brown.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
I have adjournment. This is of the last session of 2018. Be adjourned. We have a motion.
I'll make the motion when you adjourn our last regular session.
By Alderman.
Peckerro.
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Berube.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the last regular session. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
I have designation of the common council president. At this time, I'd like to call for nominations for the president of the common council.
I think our council president has done a fabulous job over the past couple of years that he's been council president. I'm humbly going to support him in his role and continue that on. Alderman Zazoka.
Thank you, Bob.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any other motions?
Any other nominations?
We have a motion and a second. Can I have roll call on this?
I have Alderman Tyler.
Aye.
Peckerro.
Aye.
Berube.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Zazoka.
Aye. Motion carried.
I have a designation of common council meeting nights. There is. You guys want to keep it the same?
Yeah, I make a motion for Tuesday nights again at 6:30. Keep it the way it's been working so people can attend.
So, normal council meetings every first and third, Tuesday night at 6:30.
Correct. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Can I have roll call on that?
Alderman's Tyler.
Aye.
Peckerro.
Aye.
Berube.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Zazoka.
Aye. Motion carried.
I have from the city clerk treasurer regarding designation of banks for 2019.
I'll make that motion to designate the banks.
Alderman Zazoka.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Alderman Tyler.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Clerk treasurer regarding authorization to make investments during the 2019 according to the cash management and investment policies and procedures.
I'll make that motion.
Alderman Berube.
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Brown.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The clerk treasurer regarding authorization to make transfers from various city funds.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Alderman Brown.
We have a motion.
Alderman Peckerro.
We have a motion and a second. Can I have roll call on this, please?
Alderman Tyler.
Aye.
Peckerro.
Aye.
Berube.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Zazoka.
Aye. Motion carried.
City clerk treasurer regarding authorization for each department head to submit petty cash slips and vouchers to the city accountant.
So moved.
Alderman Peckerro.
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Brown.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
To require authorization for each department head. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
From city clerk treasurer, designation of the Niagara Gazette as the official newspaper for the city of North Tonawanda. I'd just like to clarify this. Even though we are naming this the official paper, it does not necessarily mean that we cannot and do not put items in other newspapers. It's just that if we have more than one, we have to put, whatever we put in one, we have to put in all three, or all one, or all two, or however many we have. So that's why we just have one and guaranteed we have to put something in.
Okay, thanks for the clarification, Bob.
I'll make the motion.
Alderman Tyler.
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Berube.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like an adjournment for the reorganization meeting.
So moved. Second.
Alderman Peckerro. Seconded by Alderman Zazoka.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the reorg meeting. Can I have? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're out of that session. All right, I'd like to call this second part of our meeting to order, Wednesday, January 2nd, 2019 at 6:42 PM. Can I, do we need to roll call again?
We'll do it again. Alderman Tyler.
Yes.
Peckerro.
Here.
Berube.
Here.
Ron.
Here.
Zazoka.
Here.
Also present, Mayor Arthur G. Pappas and City Attorney Luke Brown.
All right. At this point, before we do the audience participation. Do you have any open?
Nothing at this time, Mr. President.
At this point, do you want to do the audience participation first?
Yes.
Any audience pre- participation on any agenda items, at any agenda items only, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing that there's none, we'll move on.
Communications from city officials, city clerk treasurer regarding removal of 23 Jackson Avenue from the appropriate in-room foreclosure proceedings.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Moved by Alderman Berube. Seconded by Alderman Peckerro.
We have a motion and a second. Can I have roll call on this, please?
Alderman Tyler.
Aye.
Peckerro.
Aye.
Berube.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Zazoka.
Aye. Motion carried.
From the city accountant regarding payment of the abstract of claims dated January 2nd, 2019.
I'll make the motion that we pay the S3.
Moved by Alderman Brown.
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Peckerro.
We have a motion and a second. Can I have roll call on this item?
Alderman Tyler.
Aye.
Peckerro.
Aye.
Berube.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Zazoka.
Aye. Motion carried.
From traffic safety, regarding various traffic safety recommendations from their December meeting minutes, I will read the one that requires action. Members Frank, Secor, and Dagler met at the corner of Louisa Street and Old Falls Boulevard in regards to vehicles parking on the terrace in front of 352 and 356 Old Falls Boulevard. While we were there, we went and met Mr. Montgomery who owns 352 and by concern residents at 356. After speaking to all parties, became aware that both buildings have off-street parking and do not need to use the terrace. The committee is, however, asking for permission to place a no parking to corner sign on a pole in front of 352 Old Falls Boulevard to eliminate any future problems.
I make a motion that we accept the traffic safety minutes?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
I have communications from others. Permission to use Grantwick Park for the 15th Thunder on Niagara, Saturday, August 3rd and Sunday, August 4th.
You know, this is absolutely a wonderful event that we do every year and it's very much international event and we bring people to North Tonawanda. I'm going to make the motion that we let them continue to do the boat races from Grantwick Park.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
From Entercom Live Events, permission to use Grantwick Park for the brews and wines on the water, 2019, Saturday, July 27th, 2019.
I'd like to make that motion.
Moved by Alderman Berube.
A second. Seconding it.
Seconded by Alderman Tyler.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Anyone, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
I have from Mr. Thomas Johnson, permission to conduct the Ride for Roswell through the city of North Tonawanda, Saturday, June 22nd, 2019, and the use of Grantwick Park for a rehydration spot. Is Mr. Johnson in the audience?
Yes.
Sir, would you like to speak on anything in regards to this?
No, just thank you. Anyone, seeing the Ride for Roswell, it's been a great experience. We appreciate the support. Hope we can do it again. Any questions, I'll take them offline.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'll tell you, the Ride for Roswell is a highlight of my life. Been doing it ever since I moved back into the area, so it's great that you are using North Tonawanda as a place to come through, especially for the Canadian riders that are coming back from Niagara Falls into the State University of New York and Buffalo. So I'm going to make the motion that we allow them to continue that on because it's a great thing for the city.
I'll second that.
Moved by Alderman Peckerro. Seconded by Alderman Zazoka.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
I have from Lumber City Church, regarding permission to close Vandervort Street from Robinson Street to Kyle Street, February 8th, 2019, for the Knights to Shine 2019 event.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Alderman Brown. Seconded by Alderman Zazoka.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor for the permission to close the street?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion is carried.
I have two late communications. The first one I will read before I ask to bring it to the floor. After conversations with my wife, I have decided that I'm not running for the office of city clerk treasurer in 2019. Please accept my letter of resignation effective January 8th, 2019. Any motion to bring that to the floor?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Moved by Alderman Zazoka. Seconded by Alderman Peckerro.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor to bring that to the floor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's for the floor.
Now, I need a motion to accept the letter of resignation.
I'll make the motion to accept.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to accept his letter of recommendation.
Right.
Sorry. Resignation. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Have a second late communication. Dear common council, I am requesting that the council appoint current deputy county clerk administrator administration Matthew L. Parrish as North Tonawanda city clerk treasurer, effective January 8th, 2019, to finish out my term left vacant because of my resignation. Do I have a motion to bring that letter to the floor?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Moved by Alderman Zazoka. Moved by Alderman Donna Brown. Seconded by Alderman Zazoka.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Do I have a motion to accept this recommendation to appoint current deputy county clerk administration Matthew L. Parrish as North Tonawanda city clerk treasurer, effective January 8th, 2019?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Do you have a motion and a second?
On the question, I just would like to say, Matt, it's absolutely nothing against you. Congratulations, it sounds like, to be our next clerk. I'm excited to work with someone new and I know who you are too, so I think it'll be a good relationship from the start. On the council side, I just wish that even though Matt may be the best candidate in North Tonawanda for the position, I wish we would have had an open interview process, you know, to give everyone equal opportunity to apply for it. But again, Matt, congratulations. Look forward to working with you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Do you want to come up and say something, Matt? Dan's great, I'm sorry to see him go, but I just really quickly, thank you all for having me here tonight. I greatly appreciate it. As you know, I was born and raised here and I truly love North Tonawanda. I really, really do. I'm really passionate about the city. There's a lot of significant forward progress as far as economic development and tourism that's taking place already. And I'm just really, really excited and eternally grateful to have the opportunity to be part of it. So, thank you all and I'm really looking forward to getting started.
And we are looking forward to working with you.
Yes. Thanks, Matt. Congratulations.
So, the one thing, I think, did we specify a date for resignation?
I was just looking at the letter and they both say January 8th, so I just think Dan's letter should say effective January 8th, at 8:30, something like that.
Okay. And then that's 9 o'clock or 8:31?
Something like that.
Okay.
So I can change that in a minute? So, we, if you want to go now? So there's no overlap there?
In my letter of resignation, I'll put down a...
Stipulation.
Stipulation or amended to state, effective January 18th, 2019, or January 8th, 2019, at 8:29 AM.
What, you're going to be able to get up that early or?
And Mr. Parrish's will reflect, effective January 8th, 2019, at 8:30 AM.
Do we just, do we make a motion to accept the amendments?
I'll make that motion.
We got a motion and a second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What was the second?
None. Any opposed? Motion is carried. At this point, if anybody wants to come up to speak on any city business for the good of the city, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. Again, if anybody wants to step forward on any city business, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Carl Bauer, 1066, Miss Robinson. I attended the last workshop and have attended a number of them and there's been some discussion on, and I was, like I said, I was at the last session, workshop session. I was just wondering if there's been any further action communication on the part of the folks that want to have the three-day festival or?
There's another meeting scheduled.
Yeah. Okay. Just curious.
Part one of the two meetings.
Good enough. Just curious. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else wishing to speak on any city business for the good of the city, please step forward, state your name and address. Seeing that there's none, we'll move on to closing comments, starting with Austin Tyler.
The one thing I would like to make a motion that we hold an executive session in regards to personnel?
Okay.
At the end of this meeting?
I'll second.
Sure.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive after this session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Austin, do you have any closing comments?
Again, Matthew, Matt. Matthew or Matt? It's Matt. I've been calling you Matt forever. Congratulations again. I think, you know, we'll all be here to help you with the learning curve and just the ins and outs and I think Dan will always probably lend in here as well, so I think we're all excited for someone new to join the team. And Dan, it was great to work with you for the last year or two and I hope all the best. So.
Thank you, Austin.
It was me, I was stressing you out the whole time.
Thank you, Austin.
But, so I don't have too many comments. I think 2019 will be really exciting and, you know, we're all here to help the city move forward, so looking forward to it.
Thank you. Alderman Bob Peckerro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations on council presidency.
Thank you.
Looking forward to another great year with you. Dan, we're really going to miss you. As I looked around the headquarters building today, many people came up to me and said how they're going to miss, how much they're going to miss you. So you really touched a lot of people in the job that you did and we thank you for the service that you've spent with us. That's great. You bet. As far as us assigning Matt Parrish as the new clerk treasurer of North Tonawanda, we didn't hold open interviews for a couple of reasons. One is, we can't afford to let our chief financial officer of the city be left vacant. We all know about our budget challenges and it's absolutely critical that we get in somebody in there with some budget experience and he's proven that through the Department of Motor Vehicles and also with the Niagara County as the deputy clerk. So, Matt, we really appreciate you coming on board and doing this. Interview process would have taken another 30 days and that would just have been unacceptable to us to leave that seat open for that much time. And we already know we've got the right guy in the right position. So, Matt, congratulations and welcome aboard. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you. Alderman Donna Braun.
I think, oh, yeah.
I will last, last.
Oh, that's right. I would like to thank Dan for all his service up here. I truly am going to miss you. I hate saying goodbye, but really don't say goodbye. We'll be seeing you around. But I do welcome Matt on board, and I'm very excited about the experience that you're bringing to us from the county and from the DMV office, and I'm very happy that we chose the right person. And I hope that we have a wonderful, healthy, productive year here in the city because the city is moving forward with a lot of exciting development that's going on throughout the city. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Donna. Alderman Mark Berube.
Just to echo what's previously been said, Dan, we are going to miss you, and I appreciate everything that you've done for me in my time on the council. And Matt, look forward to working with you likewise. I'm sure you're going to bring a lot of experience and new ideas into the city. And again, we're looking for a very productive 2019. There's a lot of new developments coming on board and things that we've okayed that are just in the process of being done now that we're looking forward to continue to move the city ahead and forward and make it a kind of a destination. And with that...
I'll end.
Thank you so much. City attorney Luke Brown.
Dan, just want to say it's been a pleasure. Looking at a new job. Matt, looking forward to working with you. First department head meeting. New guy always brings donuts and coffee. So, it's first Tuesday of every month, so...
And city clerk treasurer. I'd first like to thank the residents of the city. I mean, without their support, I would have never been able to serve them for these last four years. I'm looking forward to my... Going back to my old job, a job that I know well. I've made many friendships up here and enjoying meeting a lot of people, a lot of residents. But I know Matt will do a great job because I know his qualifications, and I've had some conversations with him, and I know he'll do the city well. And my only disappointment is I wasn't able to spend my last meeting here and look at Sonia.
Want me to call her up? I have her number.
Thank you very much.
I think her last... We'll make sure she gives you donuts. I just wanted to... I'll end with a... I have just a few thoughts, but I'm going to have the mayor go next. Any closing comments that you have for tonight? Yeah. Yeah, you might as well.
First of all, I'd just like to say that I'm very happy that we're going to be having the Thunder on the Niagara again for the 15th year in a row because that is such a great family event that takes place now every summer here on the Niagara River at Grantwick Riverside Park. It's the family atmosphere and what it draws in those couple of days that it's here is just amazing. And to see the different countries that are involved with this and the sky... Sky jumps and everything from the planes of Canadian-American skydivers. And this year, they even had a third one from, what was it, New Zealand?
Yes, you're right.
Yeah, New Zealand. So, it draws a lot of international attention to the city too, and it's great for our whole community. So, I'm glad to have that. Excuse me. And the Ride for Roswell. Thank you, sir, for all you do to bring this to the city. It's a great... It's a great cause, and it's very, very successful here. Very proud and happy to have it. Excuse me. Dan, it's been a pleasure. I... I don't know how many times a week I'm calling you or working with you or looking for you to find out the answer to some question because the city clerk treasurer and the mayor's office have to work very closely together. And so, I'm either running over to his office, or he's running over to my office, and we go back and forth, or by phone, or whatever. So, you've been a tremendous help, and I wish you well in your new endeavor. Thank you. Your new old endeavor. But we're welcome aboard Matt Parrish, and I'm looking forward to working with you. So, next workout, and next week, I'll be nailing you first day to come in so we can sit down and go over a few things after the...
No pressure, man.
I was going to say, you should bring off your hat.
Well, I, you know, that's fine, or I'll have one before the meeting, you know, before we meet. I do like jelly.
Always recall it.
Oh, well. Either one. You've got to keep the bulk of that. You got one. The last one right here, right? Go Budweiser. I'll be perfectly satisfied with that. Looking forward to meeting with you and working with you. I really, I do know your passion for North Tonawanda, and between Dan Quinn and Matt Parrish, you have a great caring for this community, and you both have so much to contribute. And Dan, you have here, and you have in your present position. So, welcome aboard. Looking forward to it. And to everyone else, Happy New Year. Glad that you could attend tonight, and I hope you have a great prosperous, healthy year, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Finally, in closing, I just have a few words to say. Being that it's a new year with new thoughts, new goals, new changes, my fellow residents, first off, Happy New Year 2019, I feel will be a year of continued unprecedented growth for North Tonawanda, continued downtown development, continued investment in our infrastructure, a continued influx of new business coming to NT, and hard work by this council, our body, and the mayor to deliver the best city services for our taxpayer dollars. We will sorely miss Dan Quinn, and we thank him for all his years of service to the city and to its residents and to this council as our NT clerk treasurer. He's been very valuable. At this same time, we look forward to Matt Parrish coming in as our new NT clerk treasurer. I know from our conversations, Matt, that he offers a new drive, a tenacity, an energetic, hit-the-ground-running kind of mindset that we look forward to, and we will need this for the challenges that we face in 2019 and that lie ahead. As qualifications speak volumes. In closing, as far as what lies ahead, I'm going to leave you with what was once said. There are several kinds of people in life. Those that make things happen, those who watch things happen, and those that ask, what happened?